See of kids faces and going, I still don't know your name. So like when I look at a faces now, I just see a C. Hundred thirty students. Okay, okay, thank you so much. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. If one could please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic who understands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, as I said, welcome to this select board meeting and we'll can, we have name tags, but we can introduce ourselves, I suppose. What we start way down with you Becky, please, thank you. Yeah, Becky Bochet, Select Board Member.
Jason Aves, Select Board Member.
Kathy Castrenell, Select Board Member, Chair.
Mark Parento, Select Board Member.
Ed Watson, Board Member.
Great, so I don't have any list for public comment tonight, so we don't have public comments, so we'll move through the agenda. So just in, I know many people don't have the agenda. We have ten items, but I think that the bigger items will be our Electric Department. We're attending is here, Kevin Snow, to present on the Riverside Cemetery Electric Distribution System Replacement. It's a lot of words. We also have an IT assessment presentation from Edward J. Collins. A correction to a liquor license, that's a small item, correct? Yes, okay. And then we also have the Pennsyl County Regional District Regional Agreement. We still have not finalized a new agreement and the old agreement expired in 2019, I believe, maybe, or twenty?
Two years ago.
Two years, okay, 2022, so we're two years behind. And we're still going back and forth on language changes, so tonight we'll do that again. And then there's just fairly quick items after that. I don't think it will take that much time, so stay if you can. Thank you. Okay, Electric Department. Nice sneakers. I got some good cushy sneakers. Nice, good, have good sneakers, don't you think? They're comfortable. Tip it, like, put it like this, go like this.
There we go, now it's going great.
It's, it's a
So thank you to the Select Board for having me here tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kevin Snow. I'm the General Manager and I'm First Class Lineman with the Groveland Municipal Light Department. I'm here tonight to talk about a project that we've been looking to do since early this spring, but I'm going to present it to you tonight. As you may know, we've been going throughout town through the past few years upgrading the electrical system. In particular, we've been upgrading the voltage that we distribute at. So we've been moving towards thirteen thousand eight hundred volts, although there are sections of town where the distribution voltage is four thousand volts, forty one sixty to be exact. One of those areas is Riverside Cemetery. So what do we feed up there? We feed the garage and the office, and that's fed from a riser pole that's in, if you're looking at the cemetery from Main Street, the front left, there's a pole down there. The service syphons down underground from there, goes along the tree line, cuts across at approximately a forty five degree angle and then goes up Catalpa Ave, up to a transformer which feeds that, that office. The conduit going up there is undersized. The conductor that's in the conduit will not handle the upgrade in voltage. So this is a project that I had budgeted for, for this year for the Light Department to replace. We purchased the conduit, we've purchased the conductors, we have the transformer. What I wanted to do tonight was come here and just kind of explain to you what we were looking to do. So we're looking to install the conduit conductor and transformer up there so that we can move that over to the upgraded circuit. Really, that's kind of it in a nutshell. We're looking to work together with the Highway Department, maybe borrow the mini excavator to go up there. We've got three heavy equipment operators that are on staff at the Light Department right now, so we'd be looking to use that. We estimate it's probably going to take about a week to get the trench dug, to get the conduit laid, to get the conductor pulled in and to re-energize the new transformer. While we do the work, we anticipate on killing the power going up to the office and garage, both for our safety and, I really don't know what else is going on up in that office right now. But that's really what we're looking to do. It's no cost to the Town of Groveland. Again, it's something that I had budgeted for this year because it's needed upgrade. So I'm just kind of looking for your permission to go ahead with it. If you give us the permission, we can get a excavator's bucket in the ground, maybe as soon as next week.
Okay, so you know my husband's a Cemetery Commissioner still, even though they're not involved in the day to day, so I'm going to let Jason chair this discussion and I'll recuse myself. There's plenty of
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Snow?
Just one, I'm noticing on the map, are you going to go, go under the wall or to a pole inside the wall?
Is, so there's a pole inside the wall line?
Yep.
Right now, so we're going to replace that pole that's there. Go to that pole. So everything in there, from the pole all the way up to the transformer, will be new. With the exception of the pad that the current transformer's on, we're going to use that one.
Would it be too difficult to go under that wall?
We don't even, we wouldn't want to put a riser out on Main Street because to put a riser in, we have to put in what we call a standoff. So the standoff would put the conduit about eighteen inches off the pole, which would put it into the sidewalk itself, which is something we don't want to do. We don't want to block sidewalk access.
No.
So just replacing what's currently there, like for like, is really the best route.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else have any questions? Somebody like to fly a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approved the Riverside Cemetery Electric Distribution System Replacement of the Light Department.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, then any other questions, discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Yep.
Four. One recused.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next is our IT assessment presentation, and who's in charge of that? The back, oh, hiding. We found you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sean Fenn, I'm with the Collins Center. Thank you to the Select Board and Mrs. Oldham, who's been really instrumental throughout this whole, this whole process with the IT review. I made a brief summary presentation tonight, but I believe that the Board has received the in-depth, the full, the full IT review.
Yep.
And so the purpose tonight really is to, if there are any questions, to be in receipt of that and then, and then also for me to just give some of the highlights of what I've, what I've learned and any recommendations for steps going forward.
Okay, so you're going to start with the highlights and your
Yep.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So a little bit about, go to the executive summary. So this was funded with the Community Compact Best Practice Program through Department of Local Services, so it was, it was grant funded entirely. And that, that program allows for communities to, to apply for funding for studies every other year in a variety of areas. And Rebecca and I worked to develop a proposal for the IT review. I guess it was really in twenty-three, and I appreciate the patience throughout, now that it's wrapped up and actually the, the community is actually eligible in this coming year as well for, for two more best practices grants in a number of areas. The Collins Center itself is, for those that may not be familiar, we're a part of UMass Boston, and it's primarily practitioners, public service, professionals, folks who've worked in municipal government. Myself, I worked fifteen years, in excess of fifteen years in municipal IT and a degree from Masters in Public Administration from Suffolk University. So a lot of folks along the way that helped do with some of the analysis on this project. And if you wouldn't mind, the next one here. Let us want to hit on some of the highlights. So really what we looked at was the operations, what services are delivered, overall budget, resources, assets, and we compared that with other communities locally. So we primarily looked at Georgetown, which is another community that I happen to be, we're doing a review with at the same time, and Newbury and Merrimack as well in the area. I actually am, I live in Newburyport, I'm, I'm local to the Merrimack Valley as well, familiar with some of the folks in this area. So in comparison with some of those and then looking overall kind of in best practices and the knowledge that our team has on how things are done and what we found to be, some of the best practices for IT and delivering IT services, some of the things, these are not necessarily deficiencies as much as recommendations and how things may be, may be improved. But around the, the area of IT strategy, it's recommended that look, have a forward-looking approach, maybe as opposed to a one-year and sort of plan to replace next year sort of approach. It's looking over more of a five-year horizon for what the plan may be to implement major software initiatives. So just an example, and this is not necessarily specific to Groveland, but other communities may look forward and say, we really need to digitize all of our documents from the clerk's office. And that may be a three, four, or five-year horizon, so they may plan over five years and can link that into the capital budget as well as operational budget for any maintenance costs that may be associated with that. So that was one of the recommendations. The others around strategy is there's a number of opportunities. North Shore IT Collaborative is one specifically that offers regional, regional, whether it's knowledge sharing or purchasing collaboration, and they actually provide some services as well. So you can, you can become a member of, of the North Shore IT Collaborative, which is housed out of Danvers. And there's sort of an à la carte menu of services as well, but I think that that's something, as budgets get tight, it's something to always look at ways where you may be able to partner with other communities as opposed to doing, going things alone. Of course, it's what makes sense, right? If it's, if it doesn't make sense, it's, it's not the best way to go forward. There were some recommendations on the enhanced use of the Vadar system, which is a primary financial accounting system. Some of those have actually been implemented along the way. And there has been a number, and I believe those were noted in the report on electronic time sheets. There was still another, another recommendation was to move towards using that system for purchase orders as well was another one of the recommendations. And the timekeeping system for employee time reporting, that's, as noted, is also something that's in, in process as well. And then device, the IT inventory management process, this is sort of tied towards another recommendation in the end, but really getting a, a more organized approach around that and integrating it in addition to just looking at it from an asset approach, but also integrate it in to the HR processes. Who's got what device as we onboard and offboard, making sure that, that devices are associated with employees and if they separated, that those devices are also tracked. So then, sort of tied into the IT strategy is really to recommend to implement a multi-year replacement planning process, and that would involve, this is a very simple example, but if you take one hundred percent of your laptop inventory, you would, you would sort of put a value on that and you'd say, I have a hundred laptops, planning to replace roughly twenty every year for five years, and you just plan on the budget. And then you would factor in, say, maybe we think it's going to be five to seven percent increase in cost every year. But getting a steady predictable, it really helps with budgeting and it helps to make sure so you don't see those spikes. So one year, you don't all of a sudden have to replace fifty laptops because they're crashing, and the next year you have ten, so you see the budget going up and down. Planning for IT asset replacement and that, and that method really helps with the budgeting, and there's a number of ways to do that. There was, there was a number of recommendations around policies. It wasn't necessarily that the policies weren't in place practically, but it was a matter of getting certain policies in place in writing so that those, for sustainability purposes, for handoff, if, so that it's not in the, in the heads of, of the people that are running the IT operations and the processes, but actually that are documented that can be handed off to somebody else to pick up along the way. Groveland works primarily with a managed services provider for a lot of the IT services. And one of the pieces, one of the stipulations in that agreement is that the contracted vendor owns much of the laptops, laptop, laptops monitors, and it's sort of a lease agreement, but it, it's not necessarily clear always when the replacement is going to be, and it's sort of based on, based on signing a new contract. And that agreement is unusual for municipal governments to have, to not have ownership, especially in the public sector, to not own the inventory, IT inventory. There, it's actually, I've, I've seen it in one other place. It's not to say that, that it doesn't exist in other places, but I've seen it in one other place and it's with the same vendor, which is in Georgetown, a very similar arrangement. But it, what it does is puts, so from a, from a perspective of trying to negotiate with a vendor or, or if you want to go out to bid and you want to see who else is out there and you want to switch from one vendor to another, as, as is recommended, to just at least see what, what sort of options are out there, you're in a, you're in a bad position leverage-wise because you have to replace your entire, your entire inventory. There's a major fixed cost there, so you're sort of leveraged, it's, it's in favor of the contractor. So there is a recommendation that going forward that move towards owning all of your equipment and then whatever vendor you work with that they maintain and support that, that equipment that's owned by the town. And then there's a number of cybersecurity policies and procedures that are listed out. Some of these are required for your municipal insurance. So multi-factor authentication is one, there's other training, and there's a number of resources out there. The state offers for free North Shore IT Collaborative. They also offer training for, for employees and some of those required things that, that would help satisfy those requirements. So I think that's it. I appreciate the time. I hope I didn't take up too much time. But it's, it's open if there were questions regarding the report or anything else I can answer.
Yes.
Yep.
Questions. So the one thing that I like is that you brought us up to date from where the town used to be to where it is today. So we at least have consolidated our software licensing and everything into a consolidated IT budget, which before it was all over the place in different department budgets, so it was really hard to know how much money we were spending on IT. I was on the finance board for years and it was always like, what is that and why does that in your budget? And now it's all in one IT budget, which is good. And we sort of inherited this Boston Systems, right? Isn't that it? The company that we use for support? And I didn't realize we're also just leasing the equipment, so, right? That's, that's where we are.
A portion of the
We're only leasing or the desktop computers. We own our servers, we own our switches, we own all of our other infrastructure, all of our laptops, et cetera. So it is only specifically the desktop computers at each individual station.
Okay, so that we would have a one-time cost to, to put that up and then budget it into a, a planning so that, you know, after a certain number of years, this would be replaced? That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So I get that part, and then what I'm trying to understand is this whole business of regionalizing with other towns, is that just to see what they're doing or is it to do bulk purchasing? But what is, what is the savings to us of trying to find other towns to line up with?
There's, there's a number of, of opportunities, and it could be as simple as just, just going to a meeting on a regular basis to find out what other towns are doing, and that would be just sort of light touch knowledge sharing. So what's new in the world of municipal IT? What are some of the, what, what are, you know, some of the software packages out there that people are implementing? They do offer, because if you buy in bulk licenses like Microsoft Office three sixty-five, you can get, once you buy a certain number of licenses, you can get a discount because you reach an enterprise level. So, so the licenses themselves become cheaper per, per seat or per user. So those are all things that could be further explored. And I had, I didn't look specifically in detail about what some of those opportunities necessarily would be very specific to Groveland, but those are some of the things that they do offer to other communities.
Okay. Are, are you aware, like, I know that within our regional school district, they have IT support on staff.
Yep.
Is, is that an area that any towns have kind of sought to share?
It, so there is another, there's a report forthcoming, but it's, it's public, so it's, so Georgetown is, is considering, they're looking at the viability of partnering directly with Georgetown Public Schools for IT support.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's a complicating factor that you have a regional school district, I think. That's because the agreement may be, how do you share that service? So it may be very simple that you create like a, how you might create an intermunicipal agreement. You could create a service level agreement with IT and that may be very viable, so it's something that could be explored.
Okay.
With, I've found that when it's a regional and you have more hands in the pot, that it can get a little bit more difficult to negotiate.
Well, yes, I mean, I wouldn't expect the other two towns to pick up any of the costs for us, but since I think the school district struggles with its budget and we're struggling with IT support, maybe there could be a, something in common. I noticed that you said none of our equipment is, what do you want? I don't think you used the word labeled, but like, doesn't have an identification on it? Is that what you meant? Like, like
It has
The equipment should all have IDs on it, so we know where, what's what?
I was specifically thinking of asset tags, so asset tagging. So if you look, for example, I have a UMass Boston laptop and it has a barcode scan, it has a asset tag.
Right.
And you can, you can scan that in and you can see exactly what, what asset ID it is, who it belongs to, who it was last assigned to, and it just makes inventory management really quite simple. So each laptop in your inventory or each piece of each server has a network name in the system. So it's, there's, it's known within the IT world, there's names, sort of virtual names to each piece of equipment, but there's not an IT inventory with asset, asset ID tags.
And that goes back to exactly what you were talking about previously where the IT was not centralized. So each individual would buy their own laptop, or when, you know, COVID hit, we had bought, purchased a bunch or a bulk, if you will, of the Microsoft surfaces so that people could work remotely. And they did have a label that said, you know, Town of Groveland, but there was no identification other than what you had from the master list from, like Sean said, from the IT side of things. So now that we have centralized that, we've started, based upon our conversations that we started this over the last year, with a tag that has like a unique identifier on it so that it's recognized by both the employee that it was given to as well as coordinates on the backend with the IT network information as well, so.
Right, so then you can track use of confidential information, security, and inappropriate use of town equipment. So we've done that?
Yes, you can, you can monitor the computer.
No, but I mean, have we done that? Are we working towards that?
So that's already in place. So if, if the IT company needed to go into the computer and there was malware, there was a virus or something, they would be able to access the, the computer in order to rectify the situation. They do monitor, you know, there's a certain list of sites that we're not allowed to go into, so there's firewalls that would block you from going into them. And there's also identifiers, if you, you know, we actually ran into this the other day, we're looking up information for the planning board regarding the Cannabis Control Commission. And so, you know, myself and the executive coordinator went to the Cannabis Control Commission website a bunch of times and BSS, you know, gave us a call and said, hey, you know, you're, you're hitting one of those trigger sites, you know, you might want to not do that, but, you know, so they are monitoring from that, that standpoint. So that's already in place now.
Okay, so that's in place. So as far as IT security, we're okay right now, you think?
IT security is, from everything that I've seen, as far as what BSS is doing, is they're, they have done a very good job with making sure that, that the network is secure.
Okay.
There are some best practices that aren't in place, like multi-factor authentication, which is really about users and adopting multi-factor authentication, which is like, I go sign into my laptop and it's that, I gotta answer, you know, something on my phone, I get a text on my phone that I have to put in a PIN, or I have to say, it's really me trying to log in. It's a second layer that prevents people from, from stealing just passwords, so it's a second layer with something. That's, that is a best practice. Where I think that there's some improvements around security are just in documenting those steps and getting it down on paper what the, what the steps really are.
In addition to the user's understanding, you know, that hackers have gotten very sophisticated in this realm, so when you click on a link, you need to make sure that the link, you know, coincides, it says, you know, grovelandma.com, there's not like Groveland is misspelled and you're clicking on things when you're going through email and it's saying, hey, you know, I resigned from my position X amount of years ago and the name says that it's a former employee, can you transfer X amount of dollars into my, you know, my account? There's things like that, that it's more so for educational purposes for employees that would help enhance our security risk, which is definitely becoming more and more in today's realm.
Yeah, and that's the, there's training, so there are specific like cybersecurity training courses that are recommended, and that is something that, and I'm only bringing up North Shore IT Collaborative because it's a service that they provide, but there's a number of other companies out there that provide it as a service, that UMass Boston subscribes to a service that does regular phishing and it keeps up to date on current threats. So, you know, what's the, what's the latest trend in phishing or other types of things? So it lets employees know, employees, anybody who's using, it, it could be elected officials, it could be board and committee members, anybody who's using Groveland, anybody who has access to the Groveland network.
Okay. Okay. And I thought you mentioned that we don't have a complete inventory, but if we know what we own and we're leasing the rest, why wouldn't we have a complete inventory?
There's, along the way.
Yeah.
I think that I have, I believe that I have, I may have a complete, I can't 100% say for sure that I have a complete inventory. I believe that I have, for all the information I've been able to gather from Boston Systems, I believe that it is. But along the way, I don't, I can't verify 100% that things that have been purchased have been added to a list. For example, Boston Systems, when they, they have their list of things that they support. And then as Rebecca mentioned, when surfaces or other things are purchased, they're kind of like, we don't, we don't touch those. Those are yours and we don't support them.
Okay.
Surfaces and any iPads or cell phone, any of those other devices that may fall into that inventory. So there wasn't necessarily one comprehensive list that's all together. And that's where some of the recommendations around IT inventory management is really to get everything under one. And I'm glad you brought up, because I think that there has been great strides in getting all of the IT. And I think they continue to be strides in getting everything IT into one area, one budget line.
Right.
That's, in the same way, whether it's supported by them or supported by us, getting everything into a single comprehensive list.
So just from your perspective, not to put you on the spot, this company that we're using right now, Boston Systems, that provides IT support and I suppose our security or whatever, and then they lease us some equipment, right? Is that it? Is it just the laptops?
Desktops.
So they, they lease us the desktop computers. And as part of that lifecycle management, they will upkeep that computer. So if there's any issues with that computer, that's all covered in that monthly fee that we're charged for them to do so. So if we have any troubleshooting issues that are specific to that computer, it's all covered under that contract. But if we purchase a laptop out of our IT budget and it's not necessarily covered under the lifecycle management, because we own it and I'm having issues if it doesn't fall under our Microsoft account or if it doesn't fall under something else, we would then be charged hourly for the technical support that would be needed in order to rectify the issue, which is not covered under the lifecycle management contract.
And so this is what you're saying is not really ideal, to have this lease ownership, part of it's under them and part of it's under whoever owns the equipment and what they can figure out?
Yeah.
Okay. I got you.
The perfect arrangement and, or the best practice arrangement, in my view, would be, the inventory is all owned by the town, town, city, whatever, municipal agency. And you work with a vendor and the vendor supports comprehensively all of those. And that's covered in your support agreement. There may be very few things for one reason or another, like CGIS, or there may be some things that fall under, you know, privacy rules or something that the vendor doesn't want to touch. But those should be very small exclusions. Overall, it should all be one. And so I think in that sense, I think as far as the quality of services that are being provided, I think the vendor is doing a very good job with network monitoring and support and security. It's the arrangement itself and who owns what and what's supported. I think that probably should be looked at.
Right. So we have, yeah, and I noticed you said we're in a difficult position because there's no buyout clause in our current agreement. And, you know, the equipment continues to depreciate. So we'd have to, we'd have to make a decision if we were gonna.
And you may very well be able to negotiate and go to them and say, we'd like to buy out the equipment. It's five years old. What's the value of it? But I didn't see in the agreement, in the lifecycle management agreement, that there was a specific stipulation that after year two, it's worth 80%. After year four, it's worth 20%, something of that nature, and there's a buyout of the equipment. The ownership, I guess, is assumed to just stay with the vendor.
Okay, yeah. So the report is an eye-opener for me. Thank you. I mean, I kind of knew that we had Boston Systems, but I didn't fully understand kind of the hybrid model that we're running under. And consolidating the budget is great, but I think having this equipment, some of it purchased, what, through their budgets, some of it leased through Boston Systems is not, is not what I would say is a good idea going forward, because just keeping track of the equipment, trying to figure out when it gets replaced, anything that's portable, I don't know if people take leased equipment home or don't, we kind of need to know all this stuff. And we need a list of inventory that the town owns, I would say. So I would, I don't know. Other members, if you guys want to weigh in on it, I just feel that having this kind of mixed system maybe allowed us to go forward and brought in our town administrator, who then consolidated the IT budgets and got the best deal we could from Boston Systems. But now, now maybe this collaborative place would be the place to go and figure out how to go from here.
And we were very fortunate beforehand because our former finance director had an IT background. So they actually did all of the IT work for the entire town. So your IT budget was very minimal during those years. It was about, you know, I think it was $80,000 or less annually that you were putting towards IT because that individual was doing all of the work. But you also had infrastructure that was not updated and that person had other full-time duties that they needed to be doing instead of helping somebody map a printer to the network and things of that nature. So we have made great strides in terms of working to professionalize the way that we conduct ourselves in the IT world and making sure that we have the resources available to our staff in order to provide services to the residents and make sure that we're communicating and we're doing what we need to do. So I do think we headed in the right direction and there's many improvements that we can make, but we've definitely taken great strides to move ourselves in the right direction.
Good. And thank you for the report. Anybody else? I've kind of monopolized it. Go for it.
I have a couple of questions. So I do work in IT.
Yep.
But don't worry, I'll probably have to Google half the things you say, so I'm not that into it. But do you recommend using end-user personas to help sort of categorize and plan the hardware and software? Or do you feel like that's kind of overkill for?
So end-user personas to sort of determine what?
Yeah.
What type of equipment?
What type of equipment, the software that they need, just to kind of help with, especially with regionalizing. So if I say, okay, my tax collector, my persona for tax collector needs a laptop and they access these programs, kind of comparing that to somebody else in Georgetown, for example, oh, well, mine uses this. Is that something that you find is helpful or is it?
Yeah. I think, especially if you have like a really, and I think if I'm getting what you're asking correctly, I think if you have a user that's running a lot of high-powered systems that are going to eat up a lot of memory.
Right, right.
So like a GIS user that may be, may be running systems on.
Yeah.
They probably have a lot different needs than somebody, somebody like a greeter or somebody reception that maybe is running one or two programs throughout the day and primarily just accessing the internet.
Yeah.
So you could look at different levels of equipment and how much memory and storage and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have more. For MFA, I know it would, there's different software that we use. Is there any, like, using a single sign-on method? Is that an ideal thing to do? Or is it better keeping it separate?
Single sign-on itself is not a bad, that's a, that can be, that can be a good tool to use, especially, it, single sign-on really helps when a user separates, because you can just shut down all their access.
Right, right.
With a single, with a single stroke. You still, I think for each, for each login to some piece of equipment where you might have access, you still want that second layer, but single sign-on is helpful. It's very convenient for users.
Right.
To have, yeah.
Okay. And then I didn't notice there was a password policy, like changing your password every six months? Is that something that's implemented?
It is. I, I don't know if I noted that. It should, it very well could have been. It's a standard Windows, standard Windows enforced Windows policy, like a, a, you know, special, special character. I don't recall specifically what the, what the, how often you have to change your password do.
Okay. I know. I'm putting you on the spot. I'm sorry.
You may not know. How often do you, do you change your password?
As part of one of the policies that we had worked on for our Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual with the Collins Center, when we did that rewrite, one of them was the technology usage policy, and it did include that. And I believe it was every six months.
Yeah.
That it was required. But there is no prompt. So that is something that we have noted that we will need to put in place.
Oh, so you're just surprised?
Okay.
And then just one more.
Yep.
As far as like cybersecurity. So I know Microsoft Office licensing, a lot of them come with like the Defender part of it. Some of it's baked into the enterprise licensing, some of it's not. But is that something that you find is helpful?
There's other tools that are in place, I believe, and I, I don't want to say exactly what the specific tool, there's, there are tools in place by BSS right now. Very robust and 24/7 monitoring that they have in place to view. I would say Defender is something that is great for the home user and stuff like that. And great for, I don't know, I think that the tools that are currently in place, I think they're going to catch anything before Defender would catch it up specifically.
Awesome. That's all I have. The interrogation's over. Sorry.
Jason?
I'm good.
And Mark?
I'm good.
Ed?
I'm all set.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for this highly technical, long report that does have a lot of good information in it. We actually do read these things, in case you're wondering. We don't just wait for the highlights. But it's something I think we're going to have to try and take one step at a time because it's going to be a big change to buy everything at once. So we'll have to figure that one out. Or our town administrator will.
Black Friday is right around the corner.
Oh, there we go. That's what we'll wait for. The no sales tax. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really great report. Thank you. Okay. I believe next is the license. And let me just make sure I'm on the agenda correctly. Sorry. Yes, the correction to the Route 97 Quick Pick Inc. Liquor License, correction of the address listed in the A B C C license? There's two Cs. Okay.
Alcohol Beverage Control Commission.
Ah, okay. So there is a correction. Did everybody have a chance to look over the corrected license?
And the only correction was the street address. They did not have the address listed as the liquor, the package store. They had it listed as the gentleman's home address.
Oh.
And so we had renewed the license. They had complied.
Ram to Zeus, to sell liquor at home.
Information.
That's not a good thing.
So the address needed to be adjusted.
Okay. I would need a motion to approve the amended license as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the correction to the Route 97 Quick Pick Incorporated Liquor License.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Just a question.
Sure.
Do we have to re-sign the, you have it there?
Yes, I have the LLA.
Yeah, we'll have to resign. Okay. Is that anybody ready for a vote? Everyone in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Pennsyl County Regional School District Regional Agreement. Rebecca, I think you went to a brief meeting on it, did you?
Yes. So not necessarily a brief meeting, but at the latest monthly meeting that I have with the Pennsyl County Regional School District Administrator, as well as the town administrator in Merrimack and the town manager in West Newbury, we had noted that we had still not come to a resolution on the regional agreement. Originally, it had expired and we were in the middle of potential overrides in both Groveland and Merrimack, and therefore the discussion got placed on hold. So then the discussion was picked up again in 2023. And as you'll see in your packet, is the original memo that came from the Select Board in West Newbury that had proposed some changes based upon their initial review of the agreement. After we had received that document and Merrimack as well, we realized that maybe further discussion with some liaisons or designees would be warranted into some of the changes that were being proposed. So we had created a working group with a member of the Finance Committee as well as the Select Board, and we had, I'm not sure how many meetings, I know there was at least two, and we had some back and forth with, you know, some additional changes that could be potentially made and some concerns that they had specifically with the location of the school, of the elementary school. That was one of the big ones that was discussed. But most notably, Select President Castrenalis had mentioned that there were some other additional changes that she would like to see in the agreement. So the other document in your packet that you will find is the document that is a working document that came out of that working group that had noted the changes that West Newbury had proposed, the changes that Merrimack had proposed, as well as the changes that Groveland had proposed. Since that meeting, nothing has been agreed upon. So the town managers and myself said, this is something we should probably move forward. And with town meeting right around the corner, it would make a lot of sense for us to reconvene and to finalize this document, have our tri-town meeting with the Select Board to approve its advancement. It will then get sent to the Department of Education and that will get reviewed by them. And then it will go through town council. Warrant articles will be placed on all of our town meetings, warrants, and we will approve it at town meeting. And then we will have an updated regional agreement. So right now, we're looking at the boards to take a little closer look at the regional agreement with some of the amendments that were proposed as part of that working group and start to move that process forward.
If my members will allow me, I, when I brought changes to the working group, I don't think you were at that meeting, I was informed that we were supposed to vote on the West Newbury changes first and then we'd consider anything else. And I said, why can't all three towns have their changes in the document at the same time? And I think that's when the meetings ended. Okay? And so that, so my objection is that there should be one document. It should have the changes that everybody has asked for in one document. And then we'd have one document to go through. So the last time the Select Board met, we didn't have Becky. We had Mark, I think. But we did not agree to the language that there may be an elementary school in each town, because the agreement was forged on the premise that each town was responsible for its own elementary school. Groveland spent a lot of money and put an addition on Bagnall to ensure that we had the space for our students K through six. So we have our elementary school. It's not, there is not a may be an empty elementary school in Groveland. There is a good-sized elementary school in Groveland that the taxpayers have paid for. The movement of five or six, I don't ever remember that being in a discussion until this moment when I saw this, that grades pre-K through five or six shall attend schools in their towns. Right now, the regional agreement says, pre-K through six will attend schools in their town. That's what the agreement was voted on when we regionalized kindergarten through 12th grade. So to start putting may and iffy kind of words in there without a lot of consideration. Because if we put the word shall in there, does all of a sudden the school committee get to vote and move the sixth grade from one town to the regional building? Because that school doesn't have enough room and we're supposed to say, oh, okay. And the other sixth grade stay in the town? I don't know quite what this is about. I don't. But I don't agree with any of that first part at all right now, unless somebody can give me a really good argument why. Because it's very iffy language and I don't, I'm not sure where the authority would rest to make these changes. Unless this was spelled out that it had to be unanimously approved at all three town meetings in all three towns for grades to move, no, because we regionalized K through 12 based on each town maintaining its own elementary school. And Groveland, who pays one of the biggest shares of the regional budget, takes care of its elementary school. We've done a good job on that. Then the other thing I believe that Selectman Watson objected to, that they wanted to take out, and I don't see why it should be taken out, I agree with Selectman Watson, leave it in, is that a clause about when, if a town wanted is that clause about when, if a town wanted to have a meeting, once the budget, proposed budget is, I forget what page it's on now, they cross that out again. I can't find it right now. Um, let me see, give me a second. It's under the budget section. Location, I'm just not finding it. Rebecca, do you have any, the section that I, that talks about, they crossed off the words if a town wants to have a meeting, a finance board or a Groveland Select Board wanting to have a meeting with the school on the proposed budget. That clause was crossed off in one of the copies, and we had already told them we wanted that left in. I can go back to the original agreement.
Is it page 55 in your?
What's that?
Page, maybe page 55 in the packet?
Right here?
Oh, yeah. Let me see. No, that's what I wanted.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, that, yeah. Wait, this is probably it. I've got so many pages here.
And then it changes to this one.
Regional advisory, it's in this area. Wait, I still haven't seen the, uh, uh, this might be the page I was saying.
Page eight, paragraph two.
Budget process, yeah. They crossed it off. I know I saw it crossed off and I can't find it. It's the clause that allows a town to ask for the meeting if it thinks that the budget.
It's got to be one of these two right here.
It's in the budget somewhere. Yes. So I'd like to see the document with all three towns' changes in it, including the changes that, um, this board had reviewed that I brought forward as far as the school showing the amount of money that it was moving into stabilization as part of the budget process, because we show on, on the town side, we show our stabilization, and we show any money that we're moving to stabilization and any money that we're spending. It's completely transparent. So the excess and deficiency fund that the school is certified that they then moved to stabilization should be transparent when the budget is presented.
I think it's right there.
You think it's out on the faded one?
Page eight. I think that's what it was.
Right. I thought they had crossed it off, the, the asking for a meeting wording. I'd have to look again.
It notes that you proposed it and it states that West Newbury would like to strike the language, but it doesn't remove it from the documents.
And they also, um, didn't address the fact that, from what I've seen of the enrollment, they're including preschool in the count of students, and nowhere in the regional agreement does it include preschool. Preschool's parents pay for their children to go to preschool, or if the child has, um, the need for special education, the state provides the funding for that student through the early intervention program. And from what I saw when I checked over the numbers, preschool's listed in the enrollment count. And that's why, um, when I proposed to put the wording in that the enrollment numbers that Penntucket uses should tie to the DESI enrollment numbers.
And that language was added as well.
Okay, and West New, so can we put everything into one document, um, that's?
That's what this one is. I know it's hard on the printed version, but the one online should have the highlights for both. If you look at the top, it's a key and it says Groveland, West Newbury, Groveland, West Newbury.
I didn't see it like that one.
Highlighted text.
Okay, let me go to full screen on this side. Maybe it'll be more obvious.
Starts at page 48 if you're using the digital.
Is it in different colors or is it just all blah?
It's different colors.
Oh, I just see it. Yep. Okay, so what's changed? I mean, they, we didn't ever meet on the complete document in the, the regional advisory group. We never did.
This was the document that was provided at our last meeting that we had as a working group, and there was no outcome of that meeting. And at that point, they said it was too quick because it was in November or December of last year, and they said that there was not enough time to get this reviewed by DESI and by town council and a warrant article drafted for town meeting. So nothing was done. But this was the last document that we had and it says, highlighted text, input from different towns.
Oh, okay, I get that. Yeah.
So we did not come to a resolution on any of those items. So it kind of, the reason that we wanted to put it on the agenda is for the board to, one, reignite the conversation, to become familiar with the document again, to see if there's any additional changes that you would like, and then to request a working group meeting with the other two towns to see if they also had a chance to talk to their Select Board members and if any additional changes was necessary, and come to some type of resolution so that we could bring it back to the boards for final discussion and approval to then go to the meeting in November, and I believe the date is November 26th, but don't call me, uh, quote me, but it's.
That's the state of the school meeting, right?
And if you look at prior years, what was, what has ended up happening is that there'd be two meetings. One would be for the regional agreement and one would be for the state of the schools. So they'd have the state of the schools and then the three towns convene for that official vote after. And that was what was done in 2019, I believe, was the last time.
No, because, well, what happened was they went on for two hours or whatever for the state of the schools, and then they said, oh, do you, do you still want to do the regional agreement changes? And it was very late and we said, no. It was, it was very late. I mean, to try and combine these two into one night is, is a ridiculous endeavor.
We can request that we do it at a different time.
Well, I want, I definitely want a different time and, um, we've responded to their changes, but they never responded to the ones that we proposed. So I would like to see the response from Merrimack and West Newbury to our proposals. We responded already.
So then would you like to take another look at this document in the highlighted version to make sure that the changes that you proposed are in there and then send that back to them and ask them to review and see if they would be commenable to?
And I don't recall the, I do not recall the, the version that was before us, before having grades five or six in the towns. That seems like a new one. Do you think that was in there before and we just didn't see it?
To the, what was it? They, they, the decimal location, the five to four? I mean, the four to five?
The, um, the wording that says that grades five or six. Yeah. I don't ever recall seeing that wording before today.
Location to the schools.
Under the location. I, I remember them saying that they, they wanted to change the words from there shall be an elementary school to there may be an elementary school in each town.
It does state in the location of schools in section B currently that in grades, uh, PK through five or six.
Oh, it is five or six right now?
That is what it currently states, yes.
Okay, and then?
And that was the one that was approved and amended back in 2019.
Ooh. So the question I would have then is, does that mean the school committee can vote to move grade six from one town to the middle? I, I mean, I want to know that because we'd take, otherwise we'll take that. I wasn't on the board when they voted that through. I would have asked about that. And the, and the issue of preschool, do we need to actually put a line in there that preschool should not be listed in the enrollment numbers?
You can. I know that the language that we added was, you know, that, um, based upon the percentage of the entire district enrollment, blah, 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 blah. So, uh, calculated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education using pupil-specific data submitted by the PRSD through the Student Information Management System and defined as the foundation enrollment, was the language that was added per year request to tie it into the system over at DESI.
But our old regional agreement also said kindergarten through 12, and they're adding in the preschool already. So I just don't understand what we need to put in there so that they don't keep changing. Remember, they changed and they added in the Essex Tech students to us, and we've had to pay that year for those. And, um, just, we need to somehow put the correct language in there, and I'm not sure whether town attorney needs to look at it.
Okay.
Can that be something that the town attorney can look at? For us to know for sure that they can't change the students that they're counting, like suddenly count preschool or suddenly count other students without a vote of the towns, all three. Do we need to put that in there as far as under student count to make it like crystal clear? Is it not clear enough is my question, because I'm just wondering why this whole enrollment sheet, which got to be the error on our assessment, how it evolved, how did it keep changing? And, and kept adding more columns and more lines and it's, that's how it ended up being such a mess.
I think the intent was to be transparent about what students were being captured as part of the calculations and which ones should not have been included as part of that. And I just think that, like a simple Excel spreadsheet, the last year, there was a, a cell that didn't calculate correctly and an error arrived. Um, and then I think it was also the change in the regulations because I believe at one point in time, or the way it was explained to me, is that those students at, at the Northern Essex Tech were included as part of the calculation. And then that had changed when chapters, if you get the number, had come about and it's about school choice. And if you don't offer that technical expertise within Whittier, then you would have to pay for the assessment of the child. So I believe that was something that had changed at one point in time, or so it was explained to me, and therefore that's why they were included, but then they were not included. So it was more of a change in regulation that didn't get captured correctly. But it has been rectified since then and the calculation error has also been rectified. But to your point, if we can get more information in regards to the preschool enrollment, I do not know enough about the preschool numbers to, to, to speak about it, but we can get more information to answer your questions.
Go ahead.
And I believe this is in the original agreement, um, under section three, type of school. In the agreement where preschool is mentioned, is done so for the future purposes to permit the regional district school committee with all of the approval of all members of the town at their respective town meetings at some future date to include preschool classes. Until such time, preschool expenses shall be on a self-supporting basis, except for those screwed by law. So I think that's already in there.
I'll check it. Right, but my point is, and I'll double-check it again. You know how many times I've added this sheet up. My.
So if it's there, then it shouldn't be part of the calculations.
But I believe it is. I believe it's in the numbers right now. And I, the only, the only kind of good part about it is that it doesn't change things by that much percentage-wise, but, um, if they're not supposed to be in there, they shouldn't be in there. Okay, so I'm kind of understanding that you want us to go through this again and see if we've changed our minds on anything we asked for.
I think we can be, I'm going to be sure that the board could take another look at this after the meeting, and I will work with you on the language in regards to the, the preschool. And then if we could potentially have this on our next agenda, we can just ensure that no other members have any additional edits that they would like to make or any other comments or questions, and then we'll vote to then go back to, uh, both West Newbury and Merrimack and get their opinions on the changes as proposed and see what happens next. That would be my recommendation to the board.
Okay, and you know what might make it easier is if, I know they like to track every single student, like they show the students that go to private school, so maybe show that on another page and then show us just the students that you're including in the count on a separate page. So we don't have to look through all these different ones and wonder what's at, I mean, it took me a week to figure out why the numbers didn't add up. It shouldn't be that hard.
And I, and I do have a, another question.
Sure.
In terms of that first section, um, has anybody mentioned what the advantages would be if a town, if a couple of towns were to merge their elementary school, effectively eliminate an Ameri-, uh, an elementary school, which seems to be that, that's what that language is gearing for future opportunity to do so?
I think what the conversation was based upon is that all of our elementary schools, based upon the major investment that we've made in our middle high school, are now starting to see their age. Specifically, I know that in West Newbury, the Page School has many capital improvement projects, um, that are required, and they are looking at a feasibility study as to whether or not they should consider to, uh, continue to invest in those capital repairs or should they just build a new school. And so I think that the intent was to allow communities of the three communities to take advantage of being in a regional school district and see whether or not there would be a potential to collaborate and to have a, a regional elementary school at one point in time, giving us the opportunity to, um, engage in those conversations and not eliminate that potential. I don't believe that the intent was to move in that direction. I think that by moving, removing the shall and making it a may, it just allows that to be an opportunity based upon what an individual community is experiencing, considering, you know, the Merrimack has the Donahue and it has the Sweetser, so they do have two elementary schools and we just have the Bagnell. So, you know, if there is a need at one particular point in time, we could entertain a regional, um, uh, effort. But obviously, as, I think it would be important to make sure that there would be a, a need, and I believe that there is, for a unanimous approval by all three communities, because that's usually the case in everything that we do with the schools, except for an override. Everything usually requires a favorable vote by all three communities for us to move forward.
Wait, but I think that, um, the unanimous is because it's a state law? Or is that our regional agreement on the capital and the overrides?
I'm not sure. It could be either or.
Okay, because, because that would be my concern, is that where it comes to movement of grades, I don't know that the state has any laws about that. So that would be my concern, is that we'd be giving authority to the school committee to vote and move grades. That would be my concern. And so would I, I'll write down my questions because I don't want to keep beating this into the ground. And maybe we could see what, um, our town attorney says about that, so we know for sure. Because I would hate to bring this forward to town meeting and just get it shot down because we have some wishy-washy language in it about grades may be here and grades may be there, when in fact we have the opportunity to clean the agreement up, put in some good, um, information about the revenues and transparency and the budget process and how they count the enrollment, get that straightened out. I'd really, I'd like to get all that done. And, and the, um, and you know, we're in complete agreement on the capital cost being raised to a threshold of 20,000, because everything costs $10,000 now. It doesn't matter what you're replacing. So we'd raise it up to $20,000 before it becomes the town's responsibility, right? That's the change? Yes. That, that, I'd like to see all that go through. I would just, I'm just afraid that if we put in the, the other language about the grades may or may not be here or there, Groveland Town Meeting might not support us.
So we could do a dual approach where, one, I will speak with town council and bring forward the concerns you voiced this evening, as well as the Select Board take an individual look, um, on your own time, and we can reconvene this matter at the next meeting where I will be able to, um, share with you what town council had weighed in about those specific points. And then again, if there's any additional components that the board would like to discuss, we can discuss them then.
I do have one other question.
Go.
I just want to make sure that we get some good clarification on the role of the, uh, school committee because they are an elected body and how they, how their reaction or interaction with the agreement is.
So I believe that the regional agreement is really between Merrimack, Groveland, and West Newbury. It doesn't involve the school, per se. I know that's a little weird because it does, but it, they don't have any involvement in approving the regional agreement. It really is, since it's a regional district, that we all agree to the terms that are being set forth. But I can definitely 100% get clarification on the role of the school committee. But from my understanding, there is none in terms of the regional agreement.
Which gets to the, if we could have a meeting prior to their state of the schools meeting, just the regional agreement, because we don't need the school committee for that meeting.
No, we do not.
Okay, we can do that then. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Ed, did you have anything else?
All set.
Okay. All right, so, um, we can move ahead to the town administrators. Goal setting and annual performance evaluation. We did one, um, the last year, right? And I thought it flowed pretty well. You participated and Becky, you did not. So, um, what do you think? Have you, did you set up your goals and all that again for us?
So I only included the goals for last fiscal year, and I also included in your packet the evaluation form that was used for the review for last fiscal year. So I figured at the next meeting I could update my goals and at least then you all have an idea of what we aim to accomplish in FY '24 so that however the board wanted to proceed, we could potentially start with the evaluation forms and, and continue on with the process that we, um, we did for fiscal year '23.
Yeah, I thought it worked really well. Last time I collected the forms, did somebody else want to do that, Jason?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you for volunteering. So, yeah, I, that would be great. Um, and I, I just, in transparency, I asked Rebecca because I thought, I know you're doing evaluations of all the staff, right? So I didn't know whether, because I've never done an evaluation of our contractual police chief and fire chief, but evidently that's not in their contract, so we can't do it. Um, so that would be a consideration. So that would be a consideration going forward, 'cause those are the only employees that we're not doing any evaluation for at all. Does that make sense? Okay. That's the same form as last year, right? Yep. So we'll get updated goals and, yes?
You're looking over some, some other evaluation forms that other places use.
Mm-hmm.
And one of them, they ask the person that's being evaluated, what do you see is your need to improve on? What is your proudest accomplishment? What is your biggest disappointment? Something that you didn't get accomplished? Questions that would be asked to the person that's being evaluated. And then some of these other points, which they're, which are covered in, in some of these, is, which they would be evaluated on, is their knowledge and skills, their quality of work, quantity of work, communication skills, people, slash, people skills, initiative in problem-solving and decision-making, tangents and punctuality, teamwork, works well with others, ability to put people in positions best suited to do their jobs and letting them do it without micromanaging. Those are some of the things that I've seen in evaluations, and some of these are covered here, but most of them are not.
Actually, I think most of them are. The ones that I think aren't covered, from what you just read, were like, what is your biggest disappointment? And I don't know, my experience, I worked in the private electric industry before, that was like an interview question, and you always tried to spin it, you know, so that your disappointment looks good. You should have been disappointed. So I've always shied away from those as far as an evaluation.
Well, if you've taken, if you've taken any management stuff on evaluations, you'd see that some of that stuff was in there.
Right. So it works well with department heads, that's what you talk about teamwork, pursues available state, federal monies, prepares and presents a budget, maintains strong working relationships with neighboring towns, and in particular, those towns in Penticott, what's working well, maintains strong working relationships with the legislature and our state and federal, oversees the warrant, supervises procurement, monitors the condition of town facilities, executes efficiently all provisions of master general laws, that's efficiency, open to directions, suggestions by the Board of Selectmen or by board members, that's us, that's listening skills and collaboration, keeping us informed, communication, liaises to town council, communication, efficiency and expertise. I mean, I feel like everything's covered, except for what's your greatest accomplishment in your life and what's your biggest disappointment. I guess I personally like to see the goals, and if we want to ask a reflection from the town administrator on, or achievement on the goals prior to doing the evaluation, that would be appropriate, for her to reflect, you know, did I meet the goal? Did I not meet the goal? How well did I meet it? That would make sense to me, I think. But the other things we do have, we have the communication, collaboration, working in teams, being an expert, communication, listening, that's all in there. Community relations. I mean, if you want to add a couple different comments to those categories that you think aren't quite spelled out, that, that we could do. Just put them down, and we'll get them typed in. I think the categories are nice, because it kind of reflects the overall working of our town, how the town administrator interacts with the Board of Selectmen or the select board. Actually, we have to change that, select board. Town administration, how the town administrator administrates, budget and finance, and community relations. Those are pretty strong categories. But we could add some more things underneath some of them, if you wish.
Want me to read them again?
Well, you could just look through and write down what you think, where you think it should go. And then we'll, we'll review at the next meeting. Put it in if it makes sense.
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Okay. That's good. Everybody else all set on this?
Sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I know, we need the curve back. I actually, with the level of work that the town administrator does, I think having them more specific to her job, rather than keeping it vague, soft skills and hard skills, that kind of waters it down.
Yeah.
I think being more specific in the tasks, and like you're saying, there's the undertone of the soft skills and hard skills within that. I think that's a lot more effective.
Right.
At least in a lot of the performance reviews I've been a part of.
Okay.
And I think having an about, like a reflection on the goals, I have to do that for work.
Yeah.
And it's daunting, but it's, it's actually really helpful in the end, 'cause you kind of celebrate all that you did, and it, I think it's helpful to us, too.
Yeah.
Because it's one thing to read it, but it's another thing to hear the words of the person that did the work.
I think it's funny, 'cause when I, I never wrote a reflection until I became a teacher. And one of my first teaching classes, they said, "Write a reflection." And I'm like, "Reflect what? I'm an economist. What do you want to know?" And then I learned how to write a reflection. I thought, okay, this is, this is okay. This is a good way to think about what you've done and how well you did it, and whether the outcome was what you intended it to be, better or worse. And so now I get it. I'm, I'm okay with the reflection thing now. But initially, I was very against it. So, okay, if we're all set on that, I think it'll go on the next agenda, correct? We'll be ready for it? Great. And we have the Salter bus permit? Is that the parking?
Yes, correct. So if you'll note that, based upon the conversation that we had at our last meeting about the placement of the buses behind the public safety building, they have agreed to move them over to the Bagnell Elementary School, in which they are currently. But they also noted that they did not pull their permit in a timely manner, so they have submitted their permit for the 2024, 2025 school year, and as you'll note, it will be at the Bagnell Elementary School, that they will be housed for the remainder of the school year.
Okay. So do we need to vote this, or?
Yes. At the last meeting, you just voted to, that the location needed to be changed, but we did not vote on an actual permit. Tonight, we're asking you to vote on the actual permit to utilize town property for the parking of the vehicles.
Okay. So I would need a motion to approve the, I'm looking through my packet, permit must be at the end.
Is, on the property requested behind Bagnell School good enough, or should we have the actual address? For like insurance reasons or something like that, or?
We can put an actual address.
I'm just asking, 'cause I, I...
So we can say the 253 School Street, if you wanted to do that, it wouldn't hurt?
I don't know, I'm just...
It wouldn't hurt.
It wouldn't hurt. Then maybe we won't have to redo it at the next meeting.
Well, yeah.
We've already gotten stung on that one. So make a motion as amended, if you want to.
So, yeah, I'll make a motion as amended to approve the, oh God, where the hell would it go, Salter bus permit for 2024, '25 school year for behind the Bagnell School, which was 2...
53.
253.
253 School Street. For five school buses?
Is it five?
It's five buses.
You have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Got a question.
Sure.
Rebecca, run that. Is that the area where they're gonna be parking the buses? Is that under camera?
I'm sorry, they'll be parking the buses.
The, where they're gonna be parking the buses, is it, is that under camera?
It is.
It is, okay.
Good. Okay. All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, next is a letter of thanks to the organizers of Vehicle Night. I actually asked Rebecca to write this. Thank you very much. The Vehicle Night, I stopped by on my way back from the gym, and I was just, I was blown away. It was like Six Flags worth of trucks, you know? It was the biggest trucks I've ever seen, and the families that were there and the children that were there, not only could they look at them, they had put all those, I don't know what you call those things, the bricks and the blocks and the things that come out of the sides, so they can't move, so the, the kids could actually get and sit up inside these giant, giant trucks. It was amazing. I mean, you see these trucks on TV and stuff, but how often do you see it? And as a child, how often were you ever allowed to climb up into one of those things? Don't answer.
Watching the guy come down the, the big crane.
Yeah. Wow, I know.
It was pretty amazing.
It was impressive. So do we need to vote this, or can it just go?
If you vote to approve it, I can finalize and have you sign.
Okay. I need a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve the letter of thanks to the organizers of Vehicle Night.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yep.
Great. Okay, and next, we have a citation for Nathaniel Schramko. Is he here tonight, or is he away? He's away, right? Yeah. His parents not here either?
No.
Okay. So this is a Whittier student, and he has earned his second gold medal in electronics/robotics at the Skills USA competition. So to get a gold medal is hard one time. To get it twice is just flat-out amazing. So let me just put this to full screen, so I can read it. Second. There we go. Okay. So we have a certificate of recognition. I think, is he off to school somewhere? He graduated, so he's off. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Nathaniel Schramko for your outstanding achievement of earning a second gold medal in electronic technologies/robotics at the National Skills USA Championship. The Groveland Select Board extends its heartfelt congratulations. Your dedication, knowledge and skill have led you to accomplish this remarkable feat, not once, but twice. You are a true credit to yourself, the Whittier Technical School and the entire Groveland community. Congratulations on behalf of the Town of Groveland, and it will be signed by the entire Select Board. And congratulations to Nathaniel. I guess we can clap for him. He's not here. Okay. And back to the agenda, just one second. Split the view again. Ah, here we go. Oh, okay, so we need to dissolve the Master Plan Steering Committee. I didn't know we had one, but I guess we did never dissolve, so we need a motion for that. There's been no meetings, no nothing, right?
Correct, and we have approved the master plan.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to dissolve the Master Plan Steering Committee.
I'll second.
And any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to dissolve the Groveland Finishing Committee. And this was the tail end of the committee that started on the town administrator bylaw, and there was an attempt to maybe try and finish that process, but I think at this juncture, it would be best to start another committee to take a look at how the town administrator functions within the town, the hierarchy chart, and probably give them more than a few months, a good year to look at sample bylaws. We do not have a town administrator bylaw. What we'd accepted was the master general law, which gives the town administrator the authority to be the town administrator. But within every single town that has a town administrator, depending on the bylaws within the town and how the different departments are set up, they typically will adopt either a bylaw or a, what's the other thing? It's a very long process. A charter. Charter is huge. A bylaw is simpler, because if we needed to change it, we just need a town meeting. Charter goes all the way through the state and everything. So my thought would be that we've had the, we now have our town administrator in her second contract. We've done one full evaluation cycle, we'll be doing another, so the, the committee would have information on the performance, and we've asked our town administrator to do a hierarchy chart, so we now have a hierarchy chart of where departments are and who they report to. So I think that, that it would be good to dissolve the finishing committee and maybe start over with looking at what other towns have that are more like us, and take some, something that's fairly simple, and see if we can get it to mold to our town. What do you think?
Well, the finishing committee did submit a rather complete bylaw, so I think it would be very beneficial for us to...
To look at that first?
Review that, and we can definitely dissolve the finishing committee, but before we start making another committee to do the same thing that's already been done, I think we should look at that and...
Oh, okay.
How it fits in and...
Unless they did it.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to dissolve, and then do you want to get it distributed at our next meeting?
Yeah, we can get it distributed at our next meeting.
Okay. So I need a motion to dissolve the finishing committee.
I'll make a motion to dissolve the Groveland Finishing Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, and, um... Elaine, I forgot that you wanted to say something in public comment. Is that okay? Okay.
We can do it now.
Okay. Do we have minutes? No, right? No appointments or resignations, so that's, that's a good thing. Any old or unfinished business? No? Okay, now we're up to, oh, anything not reasonably anticipated? I'm not aware of anything. Okay. And now we're up to town administrator time.
So as we established at the last meeting, I've been trying to formalize a little bit more of the updates that I have for the board, so this evening I provided you with another memo detailing town hall operations, things that are happening here in town hall, event permits and things that have been approved, grant updates, procurement updates, et cetera. I also try and include some of the meetings that I've attended that I can share with the board, so that you're aware of some of the things that we're embarking upon. So as you'll see, I won't go through as much details, 'cause I know it's a five-page document, so I will be very brief with the updates that I'm officially informing you, but this memo is now part of the public record and will be enclosed in the packet, so the public is able to see it, and it is part of the record. So one of the first things is that we are embarking on a new project list. So based upon some of the feedback that we've heard, there's been a lot of questions about some of the things that we are working on here in town hall, and what the departments are focusing on, and just different initiatives. And so there's a lot of different moving pieces, there's a lot of different projects, there's a lot of different incentives for people to pursue grants for certain options and things of that nature. So we figured that if we would do a project list, like some of the other communities, we can share that with the select board, and it is an active document, so that you will have firsthand knowledge of certain things that are happening. So, you know, if we're working on a particular grant and you're curious of where we are, you can pull up that live document and you can see exactly what's happening. So if residents were to contact you about a certain issue, and you couldn't get in contact with the department head, but you were familiar with something that was happening, you could potentially provide them some of the information until they're able to speak with that department. And it also gives you an understanding of some of the things that these departments are focusing on. So that will be available to the board on October 1st. So I did send out a request for all the departments. We did try and be reasonable, so we weren't like, "Give us everything," so that it was completely overwhelming, but we did ask for at least top three priorities that your department is working on. And it is an ongoing list, so it's not something that, you know, you're gonna be finished this by June 30, 2025. Some of the initiatives, definitely things that will be accomplished sooner rather than later, but some of the other ones are more ongoing issues that the departments are working on, or they're required to work on to keep with accreditation or working towards a goal that they have for their particular operation. The other update I have is to let you all know that I had issued the town administrator newsletter for August. For the month of August, I focused on feedback. I think, again, a lot of the feedback that we've heard from residents is how we communicate, whether or not we're using Facebook, Instagram, whether or not we're updating the website, whether or not we have information readily available on hand and hard copy form, and I really wanted to get a better understanding of what and how people wanted to communicate with the town, not just my office, but also other departments, as well as the select board. So as part of the newsletter, we also issued a survey where we asked a series of questions about how residents would like to receive information and how they would like to participate. Would they like to participate in more surveys, joining a committee, things of that nature. So we also, as part of that survey, asked about focus areas, so if there's certain things that we're not addressing. So are people more concerned with roads? Are they more concerned with, you know, lack of community centers, or community events, or housing initiatives, or school, or the budget in general? And just trying to get some feedback as to what residents are looking for us in town to focus on, to push those initiatives further. So once we get the survey results, I, again, put them out as part of the newsletter, and also at Groveland Day, we will be there, we'll have a little Town of Groveland table, so I will have a QR code, so people can take the survey there as well. So once the results are finalized, I will share them with the board for the review and discussion. I also wanted to let you all know that the 2024 Annual Town Report preparations have begun. We utilized the ClearGlove platform last year, which we use for our budget book, which can be really convenient and can be more user-friendly when you're looking for certain things than when you're trying to display information. So you can use more photos and graphs and you can pull from the budget book, which can be really helpful from certain departments, because as part of the town report, there's certain requirements that we are, we're supposed to meet, such as, you know, posting all of our trust funds and posting the annual warrant and things of that nature. So it really makes it a easier platform. So we sent out the request to the departments. We have until the next town meeting to complete this, but we started to make the request so people can slowly start to fill in the information and we can assemble at the end of the day. For the cable and phone equipment relocation, as you'll note, the big tower is finally out of the room. We're really excited. That will really enhance the ability of the Council on Aging and others to utilize this room to its fullest potential. Obviously, all withstanding the fact that we can use it as our meeting room and it has the camera, the projector, and things of that nature. So we're super, super excited about that, and you'll note that you saw in the back meeting room, that is also a work in progress, but that tower should be removed as well. So on September 13th, because of that move, we will need to shut down the network. So we will be without the network for just that day. We have informed departments about that outage, so proper precautions have been taken by the departments, and it is a Friday, so it's not as though it's going to be something that would-
Friday the 13th?
Yeah. I don't know. So, but they have been notified. So just to let you know that the 13th will be a day that we will have the, the network down. And then also, I wanted to let you know for the next meeting, I have invited our new Projects and Programs Coordinator, Arthur Marcos, to attend the meeting, so he will give a brief introduction of himself and his past experience, as well as discuss how he's looking to approach the pavement management program. There's many other projects that we're starting to get him involved in, the tree maintenance plan, one which has been a priority of the board to start getting more information on. I know we started some initiatives with the former superintendent with an arborist and things of that nature, so there's that. We have our MS4 permit, we have our MVP grant, we have our Salem Street dam, so there's many projects that we just threw at him within the very first week. And so, I think it was a very overwhelming and daunting experience, but the main focus has been, one, what are we going to be focusing on for our pavement management plan, because paving season is right around the corner. And also, we have embarked on getting, the markings down. So usually prior to the school year, we'll put crosswalk markings down and then we'll, we'll be able to get ready for school. We're a little behind the eight ball on that because of the transition, but that's actually going to be happening within the coming week. So we are excited about that, and he's organizing that, and it's been really great communicating with all the necessary parties, getting details where it's necessary, et cetera. So he will be attending the meeting on the 16th. And then I have also asked the town accountant to attend the meeting so that she can give a report on the financial year end for fiscal year '24, and also to explain to the board a little bit more about the free cash certification. You should have all received an email from DOR on that, so she'll be able to provide some additional information. And I believe she actually sent out an email today with some of the budget to actual information. So I've also asked her to come into the meeting next week to discuss that in a little bit more detail. So the other additional information that I've included on the memo is some of the project requests and residential concerns that have been brought forward specifically to my office, one of which was the 733, excuse me, 737 Salem Street in Quick Auto. So I provided you some information in regards to what's happening at that site, the issue that was brought forward, what that, was that the Select Board had approved an additional 26 vehicles for a Class II auto license with the understanding that the company would no longer be towing. And so, if you look at the site, you'll actually see two tow trucks on site. So it was brought to our attention, and so we did some investigation just in terms of reaching out to the property owner and asking a question, and they said that they had essentially leased out the bay, and so as part of that, they have one tow truck and will have one tow truck on site. They said that the other tow truck that's on site is actually for sale, so it's in the dealer location. However, if you look at the information and materials that were supplied to the Select Board, it clearly states that they would no longer be having towing at that particular site. And if you do look at the Department of Public Utilities website where you're required by law to register two tow vehicles, they are still listed. So it was something that was brought to my attention to bring to, to the Select Board to inform them that this may be something that you might want to address. The next issue that came about?
So just because, again, this is something I've never had to really go back and forth on. I wasn't aware that when we issue a license to somebody, that then they can turn around and sublease another endeavor. I mean, I understand it's a commercial site. So what are the parameters? Like when we give a license to do this, can, can any business owner then turn around and sublease to do something else?
We didn't give them a license to operate as a collision or repair facility. The Select Board gave them a license to operate a Class II auto.
Right.
So they're only licensing them to sell vehicles.
Okay, so they're, so, so they can't sublease to do collision and repair because we didn't give them a license for that?
Well, they wouldn't need a license from the Select Board. It's not regulated under the Select Board to issue that license. The issue is that they only, before they subleased, because they were an auto body and towing company, is that they were only allowed six vehicles on site to, for a Class II auto license because the site was already filled with their tow trucks and the, and the vehicles that they were towing to the site. So they said that they were no longer going to be towing and that they would no longer have those vehicles at the site so that it cleaned up the site, and therefore, instead of just getting the six vehicles, they would want to bump that up to 26. And so the Select Board agreed to allow them 26 instead of the six. So you never originally granted them a permit to operate as a repair, collision, and/or towing company.
But that's what's happening, right?
Right now, that's what's happening in terms of the use of the property in addition to the Class II auto license, that, where you increase the cars again from six to 26.
Right, so-
But if I, if I remember correctly, it wasn't that they were going to stop, it was going to minimize their need to have, to have as many toes and things. They, they never said they were going to stop it completely.
Yeah, they just wanted the limit, they said they were going to have more cars for sale and-
So they wouldn't have to do as much type stuff, towing.
I'll look, I don't know.
The letter says that they would stop, and I can pull it up on the, on the-
That's, that's what it said in the meeting.
-screen if you want, but it does say that they would stop-
Yes.
-towing and storage on site.
And that's why we gave them more spaces, because we said, "Okay, you're not going to be towing broken cars here, now you want to put cars for sale, that would look okay."
Yeah.
And now it appears that that's not what's going on, so-
We can invite the owner in at the next meeting to have a further discussion, but like I said, for my purposes, when more than one person or even one person brings something to my attention, I wanted to make the board aware, particularly when it involves a license, a permit, and/or an issue that's directly involved with the Select Board. And that's why it's there.
We gave them a permit to sell cars, right? And now they're, they've-
They've always had a permit to sell cars, we just increased the limit.
Right. We increased it because they said they were getting out of the towing wreck business, and then they put, they subleased their building out, and there's another sign on it of some kind of a wreck company, right? So, I don't know what the discussion would be. It's, they, they did that. If they're not allowed to do it, then they're not allowed to, but if they can just do that, then I guess the next time they come back for license, we'll take it under consideration, what's going on.
Would it be a bad idea to have Sam come in and maybe talk, because there's been a lot of stuff going on?
I know, he's already been there a few times.
It's-
I know, the building inspector. So-
So that's the letter that was provided to you at the last meeting. It says, "They will no longer provide the towing services for the Town of Groveland. We no longer need the space initially designed for towing and storage yard. We decided to clean and put this space to use towards the dealer." So that was a request to move from six to 26. When it was brought to my attention, they asked why they were allowed to do both, and I said, "That's not what the board had agreed to. I will research what was allowed, what was done, and I will bring it to the Select Board for them to make a determination as to whether or not they would like to bring the owner in and have further conversation and/or revoke their license."
When we give a license to one company, right? Then they sublease to another company that does something slightly different. Who does that company need a license from to do their business?
So they wouldn't need a license from the town to operate as a repair or collision center? That's a private agreement with landowners. They're not changing the use, the use is a pre-existing non-conforming repair shop. It, it, it holds that nonconformity. So they can use the site as such. Until they stop using the site, then it will lose its, 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 um, nonconforming use.
All right.
But they haven't done such, so there's no grounds for us to dictate what they do with the site. The authority within the board lies within the used car license and the fact that six cars didn't overcrowd the site with the intent to no longer tow and store. But if they're doing both, then those terms have changed, and does the board want to revisit that with the owner, is the question.
Well, yes, if they're going to start towing and having, need storage for the tow trucks and whatever they're towing, then clearly they can't put everything neatly away any longer, right? So, I mean, our additional spots were, she gave us a diagram and showed us exactly what was going to be in those spots. Is that what's in the spots now or not? That's my question. I mean, does the building inspector need to go take a look and tell us, how are those, the places that we gave, how are they being utilized? Are they being utilized for car sales or not? Because that's why we gave them extra spaces, right? To sell cars? If it's going back to the kind of facility it was before, then it would have the same privileges that the owner before had for this much storage and this many cars if you're going to be doing both. Because otherwise, the neighborhood, it, it's too much, it impedes line of sight, it impedes the intersection, and it doesn't, you know, it's not an improvement to the neighborhood, that's for sure.
So maybe have them come in next meeting along with Sam?
Right, if you could give us some kind of a short update about-
I know what I would say.
-what's actually parked there? How many cars are parked there and how many of them are for sale and how many of them are not for sale? That would be, that would help us understand what-
So then I'll reach back out to the owner when I originally requested what was, was happening at the site, and I did let them know that that wasn't per the letter and attached the letter. I had yet to hear back from them, but I will follow up on that correspondence and I will ask them if they are able to attend the next meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So another project that was brought to my attention was the MBTA Advisory Board. So the chair received a letter from the MBTA Advisory Board as she was appointed the new chair for the Select Board, and informing her that she was the ex officio member for the MBTA Advisory Board. So additional information was requested to get a better understanding of what is the MBTA Advisory Board and what would Groveland do as part of that board. So as you'll see, the Town of Groveland is classified as an MBTA community, which we've heard in other cases, and as such, under Section 7A, there shall be an advisory board to the authority consisting of a representative of each city or town paying an assessment to the authority. So as you may have noticed on our cherry sheets that we receive, where it dictates our revenue for the upcoming fiscal year, it also has a lovely page that says "Assessment and Charges," and those are something that we can count on being charged for. One of such is transportation authorities, and as you'll note in the document as well, there is a breakdown with the MBTA, Boston Metro Transit District, and the Regional Transit Authority. So for the MBTA, for the assessment for fiscal year '24, you'll see that it is only $443. So it's very minimal. For the Boston Metro, obviously it's zero, and then for the regional transit, you have $49,641. And the regional transit is MIVA or MVRTA, as some of you may know it, and so we do a lot of work with them. We're actually one of the, the largest ring and ride users in the Merrimack Valley, and we also have a fixed bus route, and we now have another fixed bus route that will take individuals into Newburyport. So we do heavily rely on our regional transportation authority, and I do attend their regular meetings in order to provide input on those services, et cetera. So that makes sense. But in terms of the MBTA advisory role, it's a little far removed from a lot of the things that we do here in Groveland. That being said, we are still members, and I do still think that if it's too much of a heavy lift for the chair to attend, there is also an opportunity to elect for a designee to be part of those conversations, and I would be willing to do that if the board wanted to.
Thank you. Do you need a motion on that?
Uh, we would need to take a-
I would so move it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Just to be trying to do that on my lunch hour. Okay, so this would make Rebecca our ex officio representative to this advisory board. Okay? All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
And so the other smaller ones is that I'm still coordinating the meeting with the Groveland Housing Authority. You had made Select Person Boucher, uh, uh, the liaison, so we're going to be setting up a meeting with Clara Rodriguez Vargas to talk about our affordable housing initiatives. There was a request for signage at the Pine's Recreation Area Playground. We've had at least three reports of an individual bringing in a dog to the playground area and unleashing the dog, which caused a lot of concern for some of the parents with smaller children. Dogs are not allowed in the playground area, so we will be erecting signage that clearly states that you may not have a dog in the playground area, leashed or off-leash. There is the dog park right up above, and you're able to have your dog anywhere in town on a leash. That also brings into attention, the next complaint that we received was the hours of the dog park, so we had two complaints about the hours of the dog park, specifically at 5:00 in the morning, I guess there was some barking going on, so they were talking about enforcement of hours and maybe potentially changing those hours. So I just wanted to bring those concerns to the Select Board. For field use property use and special event permits, we have nothing as of now, but stay tuned, there will be a lot more in terms of the field use permits that are coming forward for baseball, softball, soccer, et cetera, et cetera. Some important upcoming dates I wanted to make sure you had on your calendar, September 7th, this Saturday is Groveland Day, 10 to 3. Again, we will have a little table with a survey, some information, and a fun little game, and obviously lots of candy, so people potentially maybe stop by and say hello. The Planning Board is holding their public hearing for 181 Rear School Street, which is subdivision filing for a six-lot subdivision. It will be on September 10th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. In the way of grants, as we just heard from Sean Fenn about the IT assessment, we have applied for another community compact best management grant, IT grant, and it will take the inventory aspect of what we discussed this evening to the next level. So hopefully we will be successful in that endeavor and we will be able to proceed with that and share that information with you. Also, as you note, the signalization at the intersection of School Street and Salem Street, that had been completed, but as part of that project, you'll also note that we had replaced the rapid flashing beacon, which we call an RFB, that's over at Ashcroft, Harris, and School Street. Unfortunately, there was a car accident where the individual took out the solar RFB that we had in place, but we had also been experiencing a lot of malfunctions with the existing solar RFB. It was not getting enough sun, so it wasn't recharging, we tried to cut back trees, and it was just a hazard. And as you know, that intersection can be very dangerous, and there are a lot of school kids over on the Ashcroft area that walk to the Bagno. So we had those installed and they have been installed, so we are very excited. And that was all funded by the Mass Works Grant, so that was not funded by the town in any way, shape, or form. Also, we applied for a Safe Roots to School grant, which, for Center Street sidewalks. That was something we did about two years ago, so we were, we were awarded the grant, but as part of the grant, it's a little bit of a unique situation. It's exciting because we don't get an amount yet, so the project could be really expensive or it could be not so expensive, but we don't really get to know that until we go through the design, and as part of the grant, they fund the design. So they hire an engineering firm, surveyor, et cetera, and they come in and they take the conceptual plan that was submitted to them, and then they design, survey, and go through and take it to 100% design, big construction documents, get it out to bid, and then they pay for the construction, which is a huge project. It is something we actually did for the Community Rail Trail, which was very successful. I believe the end total was almost over $2.4 million for the rail trail, and that was all funded through the state. And so that's essentially kind of the same type of program that we are within the Safe Roots to School for the Center Street project, and more specifically, that will also include the replacement of the culvert on Center Street, which is failing as well. So again, a great opportunity for us to get that included as well as have sidewalks. So one of the reasons I bring it to your attention is, we talked about it about two years ago, it is a long, long process of getting these types of situations, or getting them up to design and constructed, but surveying crews were out there just the other day. So I wanted to bring it to your attention because you're going to start to see a lot more activity in terms of the design and folks walking up that. And that's from the intersection at School Street and Center Street all the way up to Atwood Estates.
Which is, we're billed on, we're billed on. But what about where's, where's the culvert?
The culvert is actually right before the highway yard and right before the universities.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm just glad she said culvert, not dam. Are you all excited?
We can't afford to have the designation of a- We can't afford to have a designation of a.
On that, Safe Roots to School. Part of that was the replacement of the culvert.
Costs us too much money.
Stayed far out of the grant. Or you don't know how much money they're going to get out of it. What's the chances of adding a second sidewalk plow so that the roots could be cleared a little quicker than what they're being done? I know that it's usually, it's an afterthought after they get done plowing. But with two machines out there, they probably could do it a little quicker. Seems like that's something that could fall under the Safe Roots to School.
We could take a look. I know we just recently purchased, and maybe Mark can, Select one, Lento can correct me, but like the Bombardier tractor. And we just replaced that with the trapless as part of the ARPA monies that we spent. So I believe we do have two.
I think they got rid of the Bombardier one.
So we, okay.
So we still only have one. But you can use it during the summer doing other stuff.
Understood.
Like the roadside mowing, that was the reason to update it, we'll say.
So to your point, we only have one. So yes, we could potentially look at expanding that. My apologies.
Yeah, I knew that. That's why I said that we needed a second.
Of course you did.
Okay, no, that's all.
The other items I have, so procurement, there's nothing, technical review conferences. We have held none, community preservation projects. You'll note that Washington Park basketball courts have officially been completed, and they look really great. I've had a lot of great feedback. So I'm really excited to see one of those projects come to fruition. Update about the Shanahan access and parking creation. I met with the executive coordinator and the engineering team over at TEC. So we have plans, initial plans designed for the parking lot. So we are going to be bringing those forward for your review on September 16th at the next meeting. We are also going to be sharing those plans with the director butters as well as the youth leagues that utilize the field. I think that the biggest challenge and the hurdle that we're going to have is coordinating schedules and construction schedules with the use of the field. I know that in talking with TEC and having to assemble some of the bid specifications, we are looking to add that information in the bid specifications that they would not be able to do work between the hours of X and X. But identifying where individuals would park is something that is going to be a little bit more challenging and something we need to think about a little bit more. But if all goes well and the board approves the design on the 16th, we will be going out to bid with a contractor award in October. Initial site earthwork would happen around November timeframe. That really wouldn't impact the schedule, but would get us set up for success. Because then once the plant's open and things are ready to go in the spring, we can hit the ground running and get that project completed prior to the summer. So stay tuned, next meeting you'll be looking at a plan. And you'll be able to ask questions, and I'll make sure that the engineer is present to answer those.
Okay.
And then the same, along the same lines is the Pines Recreation Area Parking and Connection Access. So we met with the engineering team. The location originally, as we had a conceptual design, I thought was going to be actually towards the back of the parking lot, but it's not. It's actually going to be closer to the library. We can get the grades that would allow us to have ADA accessible sidewalks or pathway down to the Pines area. And it would then connect over to the sidewalk connection point that's in front of the dog park. So it will all smoothly align, and there'll be landings and things of that nature that will make sure that we're compliant with the regulations. So there's that. And then there's also the finished paving and the markings that are associated with that project as well. There's a little holdup because as part of the splash pad project, we're just kind of on hold because we're not really sure exactly the design. There's the water and sewer connection that are across the roadway. So obviously, we don't want to put the top coat onto the pavement if we're going to be digging it up and putting a utility connection. So we are trying to figure out, do we need a utility connection? Is that necessary, et cetera, et cetera? So once we get that information, we should be good to go. It looks like it adds the additional parking in front of the dog park on the other side. So there's a good three parking spots, then there's a transformer, and then you get another good three parking spots. So you have those six parking spots that will be right across from the dog park. And then you have another area that goes down to the boat ramp where the parking will be pull-in parking towards one of the fields where you're adding additional parking as well. So that will include the striping, it'll include the paving, and it'll include the walking path that comes from up here at Town Hall down to the Pines. So that is also a draft plan that we have in play, and that will be before the Select Board on the 16th as well. So 16th is going to be a very busy meeting. I will keep my next memo even shorter. For meetings, events, and seminars, I just kind of listed everything that was worthy of noting and/or that I could put on the document. And then also wanted just to highlight that I did have a meeting with Bob Ward over at the Havel DPW Department. We had received notification of a project that is going to be done at the Havel landfill. Originally, the project that was presented, I believe, to the Conservation Commission in the town was specifically for just capping the landfill and creating habitat area. That has since changed. So we received the notice that there wasn't going to be an amendment. So we reached out to kind of get some more information. And it was shared that now the plan is going to include a recreational field in Havel closer to the water as well as parking. And there will be access coming from Yama Road, which, you know, we share with Havel as an access point to the back there. So they will need to file with the Conservation Commission for their impact to Johnson's Creek. But it is something that we just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of. It would be a very beneficial project to some extent because it goes along the length of the trail. So it's a really great way to connect Havel and Groveland. And we already received the Gateway Cities Grant to move the trail from Groveland into Havel. So it just allows us to extend even further, and it provides another green space area for people to use. And the parking lot would be something that people could also use in addition to other parking locations that we're looking at in Groveland. And they are looking to add an additional walking trail that would go along the river. So currently, the trail just goes the length of the corridor. So it just goes straight, and you can like kind of look over to the water. But with the fields, they're going to add an additional way so that you can walk actually along the water. So it would be a nice amenity to add to Groveland as well. So we're looking forward to hearing some additional information from them as that project goes along. But right now, it's just in its permitting phase. But if there's any other meetings that's listed that any of the board members have any questions on, I'd be happy to answer them. But otherwise, that's my updates for.
That's a lot. Thank you. You have a question?
Yes, but earlier there was a reference to the permits. I was just wondering if any of those have been used for Soul Street project? You gave a report in your report. Any of the, you already used Soul Street project?
No, just the field use property use and special event permits under the jurisdiction of the Select Board.
We have a letter, though, that would have been in our next packet from this, oh, you have it? Okay, it's not listed on the correspondence, but we, they have it, right?
So if you're referring to the Soul Street project and the letter of housing eligibility?
Yes.
I didn't receive that until after posting the agenda, which is why it's not included on the agenda, but it's included in your correspondence.
So it's okay for people to look at it if they wanted to?
It's a public document.
Okay, okay.
If you could just tell us pretty soon what's in it, how many of the words that mean?
It's a go. No, it's.
This is the Garrison.
Kathy, perhaps you could paraphrase this? Because I don't think you've probably seen this.
Yes, the one from the Housing Authority you were talking about, right?
No, I'm talking about the one from the.
Smolik, no.
Smolik and Born to.
No, that's what he writes to them. What the Housing Authority wrote to us basically is indicating that the comprehensive permit has been issued and the financing that is necessary for the project has been approved. So that, that would be what I believe that builder has been waiting for.
Does that mean he's going to apply for a building permit?
I would expect so, but I'm not in charge of that, right?
He has been issued his building permit.
Oh, okay, that's what the comprehensive permit means. And he has the financing, too, so.
Soul Street, all of them?
192, yes. 192 apartments, right?
That's correct.
Yes. So, and so then I think I forwarded to you, too. All these things came in very late in the week. the report that we just approved and sent in and that we wanted sent in to the Housing Authority has been sent in.
The housing production plan has been submitted.
Correct, that's been sent in. The date, the exact date, I don't have that in front of me. Just came in this week.
I'm not the building commissioner. I would need to ask the building commissioner exactly which date it was approved.
Yeah, it was, like I said, these letters all came in, maybe because you were calling them every day. No, but they, but you know, sometimes some persistence does pay off, but you're welcome. So the two, the housing, there's the Executive Office of Housing and Desirable Communities. That's where we.
Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Livable Communities. That's where we sent our letter about the Garrison Street. And then it's mass housing that is where the Soul Street is getting their financing. So there's. Yep, and so that's. It's supposed to, yes, yes. So I believe, you know, as far as the Select Board is concerned, we've done every task that we were put before us at this point. And now we have to just wait to see what would be the next step, which we don't know. And I think we still have the information on our website just by way of explanation because it is kind of an unusual situation. We don't put up this much information about every single subdivision or whatever that gets built. But this one was very different. We had Bethany Holmes coming in, trying to do presentations. So we wanted to make sure that the public was completely and fully informed. So we, Bethany Holmes provided their link. And I thought, you know, as long as it's still in our arena, we'll leave this information up. Some of you may like looking at it, maybe some of you don't like looking at it, but it's transparency. This is the information that Bethany Holmes is putting out there. And we have also up the information of what we filed and the video of the meetings that we've had. And of course, all of the input from our residents. So everything that was done in, in terms of the Select Board and the Executive Office of Housing is on our website. And once we're sure that that phase is done, then yes, we'll take that stuff off. Because once it goes to zoning, then that's, if it goes to zoning, that's a different process. And we're not specifically involved. Okay? I hope that helps you understand.
How much was Bethany paid to be on our website?
We don't charge anybody to be on our website, but, right, we're not, we're not, excuse me. Let me just finish. We are not promoting or not promoting this. You know, we filed our letter. I think we were crystal clear in our letter to the Executive Office of Housing on the concerns that are very real as far as trying to put that big of a building on that small piece of land in that rural environment. That it does not fit, it would not work. And our lawyer came up with a number of good and very viable legal references. So I feel like we've done our diligence and we meant what we said as a board. But if we don't provide transparency, if Bethany Holmes has a website and other folks are looking at it, and then other folks say they don't know where to find it, or they can't see it, you can see it. Okay? We're not selling homes on Garrison. We're just trying to be very transparent. And I don't know how else to do that. Because if we don't show it on the website, then somebody will say, well, why didn't you tell us about this part? So it's there with, you know, yes.
I assume you've seen Bethany's response to the lawyer?
I haven't read it in depth, to be honest. I've kind of pushed it. I was very pleased with our town council's approach to this.
Well, I thought it was great. I'm asking if you've seen the letter in response to that.
I have it. I haven't read it over a few times like I should. I will. I just, I was, like I said, I was, I think that based on your input and our attorney being here and hearing your very real concerns and your caring for the town and all of that, I think that that was brought into that letter that we sent, not just with feelings, but with loss and with, you know, citing cases. So of course, they're going to argue the other way, but.
Right, but what they're.
I'm not an attorney.
They're claiming that that meeting, that the town was in support of it and all this.
I don't know, I don't know what meetings they were at.
The thing on that was is I don't think there should ever be another meeting like that again. Recorded off the book.
No, we.
Mark confidential.
We didn't have anything off the books confidential. I'm not sure.
There was the header right on the, right on the statement about that.
Okay, I'll look at that some more. I apologize, I'm not.
Not an agenda item.
There was no, it wasn't on the record, it wasn't recorded.
I'll look it over.
They're claiming we said anything they want to claim, and it's going to be a he said, she said. Nothing like that should ever happen.
Well, not.
It should be above board, on the record.
If I could say, I will look it over and see if there's any reason to bring that forward as an agenda item. But I'll just say this to you. I mean, we don't need to do the he said, she said, because we have recordings, we have minutes. And as I said, by, excuse me, by having the residents inviting you in to come and make your public comments, your public comments become part of our minutes. Once our minutes are accepted, those are public records. So they can't dispute that public record.
I'm sorry, I'm referring to the meeting with the town officials and Bethany prior to this.
They can.
This is the one that they're claiming that they had the approval from the town phone.
They, I guess people can make up things that they want to make up, yeah. Every builder, no, no, every builder, and I think our town administrator explained it well. And it's on her summary here. And if you, our last summary, she had a technical meeting on the school, was it, I forget which one, School Street? No, another one. Oh, Cedar Dale, maybe? So anytime there's a larger development meeting that's proposed, whether it happens or not, and Cedar Dale hasn't happened yet, but there've been several meetings where they bring in the chief of police, the fire chief, the water and sewer, the town administrator. Am I missing anybody? A planning, a town planner. And they just, what they do at that meeting is then tell them what our rules are. What are our bylaws, what are our zoning, all that? I'm not a technical meeting person. I've never had to be part of that. But they, this is a normal part of what the town does. It's not an endorsement meeting. And anybody that walks out of that and thinks they've got a building permit is just deceiving themselves. Okay, they're just there to provide the technical information to anybody that's trying to build something in this town.
I understand.
I know, and I mean.
It's off the record.
I can't control, okay, but no, it's not off, excuse me, again. There's minutes for the technical meeting, so it's not off the record. And in the technical meeting minutes, there's no endorsement, so.
They're claiming this is where they got the endorsement.
I can't control what another attorney is going to write. I'm sorry, I just, there's not more I can say about it, all right? That's the best I can do for you. But what we can do is we can all take another look at that letter. And if you, if the board feels that that's worthy to bring up, fine. But I just, I think that we've taken a very strong, direct action and made it very clear to the state that there was no endorsement. Our attorney said that, that that was not true, and that these were the concerns of the town. Okay? And that's, that's our record. Okay?
Some of us said similar things about that.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so now I think we're at, after going around, Selectman's time, am I right?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, Mark. Jason?
Yeah, I definitely want to thank the water department. I had some puddling out in front of my house. And before I even had an opportunity to call them, they were out to investigate what it was and found a leak in their line, so. They're on top of it as always, and I really appreciate that. As well as our other departments. I also would like to thank the Council on Aging because they do so much within the town and for the folks that they work with on a regular basis.
Okay. And Becky?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm sure, we get so much email, it's hard to read everything. But I read through the, from Darcy, our library director, lots of stuff going on at the library. She did a great job summarizing everything they do. And I appreciate the reach out to the Select Board because it's hard for us to always see everything that's going on. And tonight, yeah, I was a little frazzled coming to this meeting. And I just wanted to pause for a moment and just see that the school shooting in Georgia just really devastated me when I got home. And I'm a teacher, I'm a career changer. We do those drills with the kids. Yeah, keep your hands in the air so they know that you're getting out of the building, you're not the shooter. And I saw that on the news, and I just, I just wanted to cry, wanted to say, you know, it's enough. It's too much, it's not enough, it's too much. And there's something has to seriously be done here. We can't have these kids doing these drills where they run out of the school with their hands in the air. I mean, honestly, we can't even all get out of the school at the same time at Woodya, there's too many of us. And you say, oh, well, it can't, it happened in Georgia, it can't happen here. There's no, it can't happen here anymore. And I just, my heart breaks for them, for the families that lost loved ones and for the school and for the children. And the sheriff.
and for the school and for the children and the sheriff's office and all the people involved. Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn when you're ready.
I just wanted to advertise that.
Oh, yes, actually, I, I want to go to this. It's getting into genealogy and it's at the Washington Hall. And it's on a Thursday night, I think, right? Is it the 14th? Yes, right? September 14th at 2:00 PM. No, it's a Saturday, sorry, I've got that wrong. Am I right on that? It's a Saturday, is Claire here? Did she leave already? She, it's a Saturday, right? 2:00 PM, getting into genealogy, your family's history, mission is $10. You're supposed to bring your laptop and follow along. And they study your family and create your history, which is pretty neat. I think that's nice. Great, thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn at, was it 8:37?
Close enough.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.